All right, call this study session to order. And we'll be in the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first I want to thank Dan King, the principal from Bel Air for being here for the study session as well. Ann Crossley had planned to join us, but she had a death in her family, so she was not able to be here this evening.
Send her our condolences, please.
I certainly will do that. So, um, tonight when we have our regular board meeting, you will hear reports on our E two and E three academic competence and academic achievement, um, policies and, and we last updated them in two thousand sixteen. But since we, since we made that update, we've revised, we've taken a look about how we're doing things in the district and we've created our commitment to whole child, whole school and whole community. And when we look at the whole child, separating out, um, how we address the needs of students into academic competence, academic achievement, and even further if we look at the rest of the Es, three, four and five, um, into behavior and, um, engagement and, and the other items that we address in those separate policies, we're looking at the children in bits and pieces and we're not addressing that all of the pieces of the student, the behavior, the social emotional and the academic have to happen together for kids to be able to learn in our school environments. So, um, as we've been doing the work to take a more comprehensive approach to educating our students across the district with our implementation of MTSS and our evaluation of what's working and what needs improvement, conversation arose among the leadership team that, you know, are these the right things to be, to be measuring ourselves on for student success? And so Dan and I particularly and Ann with previous input took a look at some other districts and how they talk about these things. And we looked at districts both that have a policy governance like we do and others that use the more traditional two thousands for, for student, um, areas, you know, academic reporting and those kinds of things. And then we came up with a draft and we looked at places that particularly were helpful to us to look at, and then Dan jump in whenever you want, um, that were particularly helpful where we looked at Manson's, we looked at Bellingham and we looked at Bainbridge Island, um, all had really good language that tried to describe what we, where we were trying to go. We also took a look at the statements about what a college and career ready graduate, what attributes they should have that are part of our Washington State learning standards and common core standards. Um, and we looked at the standards that come from the social emotional learning that come from the National Association on School Counseling. And we tried to embed all of those into the document that you see as instead of E two academic competence and, and certainly all the words in these documents are open for discussion, we rewrote it as E two student success and in, and made a three-part rather than, um, academic competence in one and behavior in another. We made a three-part, um, description of what our students would be able to do. So we, like we found in some of the other policies, particularly Manson and Bellingham. So we have two A that deals with academic achievement. We have two B that talks about personal skills development that we might expect our graduates to have completed. And then two C, social skills development. So I'd like you guys to kind of take a minute and read through those and, um, and we can start with your responses to this draft because this is our, our initial draft and some work that we put together.
Right, I have a, a question or two or whatever, just for clarification for my sake mostly. Um, these were the policies, if I remember right, that we worked on in study session when I was board president. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so as an overview, this is for my sake, however, whatever you guys take out of it is for you, um, is, you know, great. Um, but from why we did that then, because that was significant changes then from what were, what we had set up when we first did policy governance and was very much at that point aligned with state and federal type of measurements. And my goal in us doing that back in two thousand sixteen was to get that conversation and that whole process out of the testing thing, out of the focusing on we're going to fail or succeed based on those outside factors which we really don't have good control over. Um, and so I was really pleased about that because as a board we all agreed this. As I've read through this, I'm even more pleased, this is again philosophically, because it's coming from you folks. And that's where it ought to come from. And that doesn't mean this is the end, the end or the, or, you know, having parsed it more than to look at it once really good, but, um, as an overview, I just wanted to give you, and I guess Dan also you, that I'm, I'm really glad that it's now coming from you, the staff, who are the ones that work with the kids directly. So it's, it's more driven by the people that were accounts. Um, I still want to examine it more deeply.
Yes.
Anyway, wanted to give that overview to make sure that was on the right page about where this came from. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And just quickly, we think that this continues where we were headed as a board two years ago. Um, we also worked to look for descriptors that are things we can measure.
Right.
Because we need to be able to provide you with a report on how we're doing in these areas.
Right, I, and, um, we'll be able to look at that better closely. I'm really, I was trying to get us away from that we have to meet these states' test scores and stuff like that and measure it against everyone else. And that was to me the absolutely wrong way to go on our board at that point, agreed with that. And this is going farther and getting down to where, as I look at it real briefly, we can actually measure and measure it against ourselves. There's still a little bit of language I saw in there that I wasn't happy with, but, but I haven't really parsed it all that carefully, just had one good look at it. Um, but anyway, so thanks. Again, that's just an overview. Um, that's, I got my head on straight. Thank you.
So I guess my, um, observation here is we're going to meld together academic achievement and competence into a, an ends policy addressing student success. So as we do this, and Dan, you could probably answer this too, are these measurable outcomes that are reasonably measured? Or will it take, I see some of these are obviously observational assessments. So how does this, how does this translate into a student's, um, report card, for instance? That, that parents will see that this, this is what these students are actually getting toward?
Okay, good, good question. Um, are these measurable? I think, I think all if, or almost all of these are measurable. Some of these we might need to think about how we will measure those and maybe, um, really kind of specify what measures will, how will we know, for example, if, um, students are responsible and safe in the digital world? That's one we added on there because it felt so important with social skills development in this day and age. So how do we, how do we measure that? That's a good question. One way might be that we're seeing fewer instances where we have office disciplinary referrals or, or, um, issues at the high school level, maybe in particular at the middle school as well, where students are being reported for using technology in a harmful way, like cyberbullying. So if we had a way to track instances of cyberbullying and seeing that that is diminishing as we put supports in place for students, that would be one way to measure. So I think if we looked at every single one of these bullets, we could, we could realize that yes, there is a way to measure this. Are we measuring it now? Some we are, some maybe not. Could we measure them? Probably so.
I think one really good example that's just kind of a tool we're just getting our feet with, wet with as far as the social emotional and the personal skills part is the Sabers screening tool that we're using now with our, that our schools are just finishing their first application of. And it is a tool that at the younger grades, the teachers fill out for each of their kids. Um, at the higher grades, kids also fill out a version. And it, all it does is gives us, um, what's our risk level for a specific student or a specific group of students or a specific class? For example, we're not done with all of our students right now, but we know that of the students we've assessed so far, about seventy-four percent are in the low-risk category. So now we know more details about those kids who aren't in low risk and what we can do better at school to support their needs to develop some of these skills like, um, being able to, um, you know, look at what's going on in my personal life and, um, establish and maintain healthy and rewarding relationships or demonstrate that self-awareness to know that I'm going to respond this way in a situation, so I should think of a different way to do this in case next time, you know, um, when I get upset, I can do it, make a choice that will be more successful for me. So these are all things that we're working on teaching our kids, so we are going to have ways to measure those, but they will be different ways. And some of those might include surveys.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what do, what do students think about some of these things? Are, are they doing that? Do they have opportunities when we look at, um, personal skills development? What kind of opportunities are they having to pursue their own interests in music and art, in leadership or sports? What are we providing? Where would they like to see more?
I really like that. I like the student survey piece of that. And I'm, and back to my concern is this is all an expectation that we will now have for our students once we pass this or adopt this new revision. How does this information get to the parents? Um, not only they are successful in these areas, your student is really on target, really, you know, meeting all of these expectations. How, how do the parents know? How will they know? Because obviously we're not going, this doesn't factor into our report cards. So how, how will they know and how do we get that to them?
Can I piggyback off that question? And it's more of, and as a parent, I guess I'd like to know that same thing is maybe tying a curriculum piece to these portions because that gives the, I think, the, that more objective measurable attribute. For instance, um, I have a tough time with policies that are, that the words don't mean anything or are vague. And like, for instance, the ends policy two C, social skills development, which I think in a great, perfect world, these are all great, but be highly skilled, a flexible thinker and an effective team member. What does that mean? I mean, my, my, my view of effective might be completely different than someone else's highly skilled versus, well, what's wrong with just being skilled?
Yeah, and in one draft I took that sentence completely off because I felt it was too subjective.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I'm more comfortable with be responsible and safe in a digital world because we can define responsible and then we can measure it.
Mm-hmm. But, and that's just, I mean, I think that goes back to Laura saying measurable. And we all have different measures of, you know, and words have meaning, you know? Um, and so, sorry, go ahead Laura with your definition.
Well, I just, um, I just want to make sure that we're not creating something that we can't administer and track. And obviously we don't need more things in the classroom for the teacher to be tracking with her checklist here. Did this one need this and this and this? These soft skills at the end, which I call soft skills, are the social skills and the personal skills. Those are all observations. And when you're observing in a, in the high school, for instance, thirty students in your classroom, are you expected to record or to document that there are kids that are not meeting these? How, how does this translate into an effective instrument for information, not only for the student, but their parents and also the system? That's my question.
I think that's a really good question. And that, that is particularly two C. Many of those are those kinds of skills that we are evaluating and having students self-evaluate using the Sabers tool.
Okay.
Um, so we, we have, and that information will be shared with the parents, I think. Right, Dan? You guys just did that?
They just finished their first, well, they haven't even finished in most buildings.
Their first use of the tool. And, um, teachers are still learning how to use it.
Kids have, that are old enough have asked themselves the questions about themselves for the first time. So that kind of information is how we would respond to this.
Some of these also, um, when we look at the one on personal skills about work and finance and performance, that's now a state requirement for us. Um, and one of the things we're looking at is how are we going to make sure we do that, um, you know, that work with our kids? Are we going to, going to have, like, um, some schools do, a student and family night where we, you come in and you get a checkbook and we give you a fake job and you have to go figure, you get, have to go sign up for a house and you have to do a budget? You know, there are different ways that we'll have to do some of those things. And some of them are, if, if we decide these are the right important things, some are all of them or different ones because certainly you can make any changes to this document that you want, then we would take it back to our admin team and they looked at it this, today as well and say, okay, what really do we have to measure this? Or what can we envision having to measure this? And we would bring that back to you because we're not expecting to take action on this at this study session tonight, but really have a, a first look at what we might do differently that helps us, guide us to more effectively address the whole kid instead of just parts of them.
So the, um, two A, the high academic achievement, every one of those items under that area, those are from the Common Core standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics. So, um, the really the-
And our current state standards.
And their current state standards. And there are the college and career readiness standards that really are the framework for all of the Common Core standards from kindergarten through twelfth grade. So that's really what the essence of the Common Core standards is, is all about, is getting students ready for college and/or career. And, and these really provide the structure and framework for that. So they are measurable and they really are what we're working at. All of our Common Core-aligned curriculum should be working towards these ends. The social skills development, as Dana said, the Sabers can, um, help us gather data and determine and measure our success towards these. It, it, not, but not all of them. Some other ones like the, um, being responsible and safe in a digital world. In the elementary level, there's a fifth grade, um, component to our second step program. So Sabers wouldn't really get at that, but there are other things that we're using like second step. Um, there's a, but that's not something that would go all the way down to kindergarten. So some of these would be measured at different grade levels in different ways, or maybe it doesn't apply to certain grade levels.
Right.
Um, but our second step curriculum touches on, um, a lot of these that are under two C. Um, I'm not, I can't really speak to secondary and what, what's happening at that level to address these areas, but we do have-
But it might be that some of those we hit the hardest at younger stages and then we re-address as kids get older. You know, in our existing set of standards in this area that we report on, we are pretty skewed at the secondary level. But there are things we need to be talking about K five, six, eight that would support that ultimate graduate at the secondary level. So I think talking about second step is one really good way to do that. Um, and then we have some other things we can look at in the high school.
And these, these could also be presented in our student handbooks as a way to communicate with families that these are areas that we value and are important learnings for students.
That would be great. And again, I mean, I read this before I came here and obviously a lot of thought and work and conversation went into the development of these three N's policies. And I appreciate all of that that the admin team has done. And they do address all of the areas in my mind that we really should be looking at to help students develop and become successful in high school. But the, back to the measurement piece, I just didn't know how, how that would happen and how you fold in the whole parent education part of it because it will be an educational experience for parents as well.
Yes.
And they may not agree. I mean, they may think that their students, um, are responsible and safe in the digital world, for instance, not realizing that maybe they're not. But just knowing that that's an expectation would be, hopefully they would partner with us then to monitor how that looks for every age level. Because even little guys now have those-
Absolutely.
-digital devices. So I, my question, or just, just for you to, to relate back to the admin team is that my concern is that this will create a greater burden on the administrators and the teachers in terms of measuring the progress on the soft skills.
Okay. I, I will do that. That's good input.
I had, I had some, uh, questions that I want to build off on what Laura said in both categories. Obviously a great deal of thought has gone into this. It shows and I greatly appreciate that. And I'm sort of act, acting as a friendly advocate. So, uh, the, the thing you'll be accused of is touchy-feely. That's the, that's the thing that you're up against. And so in that regard, I, I just want to go down the list quickly and point out a few things and we can discuss them as needed. Um, so just starting at the top, I think build, build strong content knowledge. That's fine. Content is whatever the state requirements are and that sort of thing gets along fine. And I really appreciate you're doing the second one so important because this is the essence of the rhetorical discipline. And I would just make, uh, this observation, adapt their communication in relationship to audience, occasion, task and purpose.
Occa- occasion?
Yeah. That's always put in.
What did I miss?
Occasion.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because then your knowledge, our knowledge is, when we give a presentation, our knowledge is addressed to somebody on some occasion. So Campbell's First Law, no success, no formula for public speaking won't serve equally well as a recipe for disaster in some other situation. So I just look at the suggestion, I, I just can't figure the discipline in. And I think it would be covered by occasion, which is the thing that is always, you know, spoken of. And that's central to humanities because it's humanistic learning because presenting a message to an audience can never be a science. And so it requires you to demonstrate some practical skills of reasoning, even in, in presenting, expert, you know, more expert material. So, okay, that's, I think, I think that would, people want to know what's discipline there? Sounds like it's thrown in. Not that I'm completely-
No, and, and if I can, what, where that came from in the standards was, you know, you write differently if you're writing, um, a science report or a science, um-
Well-
-experimental report as if I'm writing a short story.
Sure, I would put it as the first. Adapt their communication in relationship to discipline, audience, occasion, task and purpose.
Okay.
So that way you can keep it and it's right there.
That's good.
Um, can that word discipline be modified slightly?
Sure.
Why not?
Two versions of what discipline means. Discipline means get in line as opposed to discipline means subject.
Yeah, and, and that might be a smarter thing to do anyway because discipline's kind of an educationese word.
Right.
Sub- subject?
Yeah, you can say sub-discipline. It almost defines it better.
Okay.
Well, I, I would think-
Well, the whole thing is, is putting it to the audience, task, purpose and discipline. And then if you're writing it for an audience of, say, everybody, um, so all the parents are reading it, then maybe-
They might read discipline as, as something behavior rather than what a content area you study on.
Right, yeah, okay.
So I would just praise the, uh, the rest of these things in your first section. And I think particularly I, I greatly applaud use evidence to construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. Look at a whole lot of education. It looks like this was put in by somebody I paid. Anyway, uh, anyway, okay, personal development skills. Demo- how would you quantify demonstrate independence?
Okay, so that would be one of the things, like, we looked at some of the projects we looked at, the independent projects that we talked about with different school districts this, this last week. That, that could look like if we give every student an opportunity to choose something about which they're passionate to study and present their learning on, then the, those, those presentations would be our demonstration of student independence. We would be able to say, you know, at X and X and X grade level, students-
Yeah.
-do, give these, you know, eighty percent of students gave presentations that were found to be-
Sure.
-adequate, exceptional, whatever measure we decide.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Uh-
That might be one way.
Yeah, my observation on it would be it's a, it's a touchy-feely person of interest. So I would just make it uninteresting to our critics, though, uh, by building, well, what were we talking about?
Demonstrating, demonstrating independence.
Oh yeah, demonstrating independence. Uh, demonstrate, you could include something substantive in that. Demonstrate independent problem-solving skills. And there's nothing touchy-feely about that.
Yes.
And it also includes, uh, demonstrate. Uh, I, I really like the, uh, now, I have a question about the next one. Experienced personal pursuits such as music, art, drama, sports, leadership and others. Since when did music and art become personal pursuits rather than academic studies? And it seems to me those are humanistic disciplines and they deserve to be regarded as part of one's liberal education.
Okay.
Okay?
We were, we, Dan and I were talking about where the-
We instilled that one from another district, but we were talking about-
We were talking about where it fits best. It's really-
It isn't elective, however.
Yeah, I know.
It isn't elective, so you're not required to participate in music, art, drama.
Music and speech and the rest of it.
But even, even as an elective, it's still an academic course.
Well, it is, it is. But I'm saying it is a personal pursuit. For instance, you're not going to go play the violin.
Look at experienced music, maybe. I don't have to be able to play a note.
But I think, I like it the way it's, it's worded. I think it leaves room, uh, for everyone to interpret it to their personal advantage.
It could be that mine's the wrong standard. I'm always looking for an, someone agenda that's going to cut communication.
Instead of pursuits, interests.
Anything that, the language that makes it central, they tried to get rid of our department because, University of Washington because it wasn't central to liberal education. That puts me out full force, you know, ready to do bad.
Sounds like that one can be just sort of fixed with changing, changes of words.
But yeah, that's right. And besides, look at, you, you're right in this case, Dan. I'm definitely applying a standard from somewhere else.
Yes.
And if this doesn't fit that, then, you know, toss it.
Dan and I discussed this and we were, we were thinking it could fit in either two A or two B. And the reason why we put it in two B is because some of these pursuits occur inside and outside the school setting.
That's right.
And, and for example, we might have students who take private music lessons and don't take any music-
In school.
Instrumental music at school at all. And so, but it is a, but it does develop their personal, um, develop, it's good for their personal development.
I, I leave it to you guys to play with that.
Something could be in both sections too.
Yeah. Part of my teaching experience is this, the people in the music department came over and took my seminar in rhetoric and we had a great fruitful interchange. Handel's Messiah is an oratorio. Where did lang, where did music get its first vocabulary? From rhetoric. And, you know, right down to musical, uh, musical schemes, right down to, you know, so it's really, uh, that's my concern.
Okay.
And you can see where I come from on it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So you guys, I just, I won't, not going to-
That's good, that's good feedback.
It is really good.
Yeah, it's a, okay, I want to just finish a couple of other things. Um, come to understand other perspectives and cultures. How can our kids realistically be expected to understand other cultures?
It's actually part of our requirement in our social studies, really, standards and curriculum. There are a lot of things that we, when we adopt curriculum, for example, we specifically look for culturally responsive curriculum.
Okay.
That not only, um, does not perpetuate biases, but also exposes our students to things that they might not experience at home
Okay, that's fine. If you guys know what you're doing, it's fine for me.
Okay.
And that was out of the college and career readiness standards as well.
Yeah.
So, um I'm saying, okay, share, negotiate, okay, that looks okay, constructive choices. Decisions in and, uh, what constitutes decisions in and for groups?
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at two C, ends.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that mean?
That, that also came out of the college and career standards, and what that, what that's about, no, but let's explain it. Because we can include more language. We tried to make it succinct, but we might have made it so succinct that it doesn't make sense. And so, wh- what that means is, you know, can they participate in a group to solve a problem? Because that's what many people will have to do at work. Or can they make a decision that will be to the benefit of a group that they're a part of? Or that they need to, you know, as, as they grow up and become adults, that they need to make a decision for? Like, a teacher makes for a classroom, a principal makes for a building, uh, you know, a lieutenant makes for the department. Those kinds of, can they, have we given them experiences about how to make a kind, that kind of a decision in a way that is to the benefit of the people involved?
Right, and those are, they can be measured fairly
Yes.
coherently. I'm thinking just on a scholarship that, well, Don LaPere, who was in on that one with me, he gave a, actually, a, a seat for a tech award to a kid who actually came back to us and described how he had learned how to work with other people, how to be in charge, now that he's at the shipyard. And he had to be in charge of the group. He, he talked to us about that as part of the interview for this scholarship award, Davis Gordy Mountain Award. And he actually got some of it from Builders Club.
Hey, all right.
Which he was able to articulate, um, and sa- saying how, because he had been president of the Builders Club, he had had an experience, experiences directing people. He was actually really good at understanding that. But being able to re- bring it back to us verbally, um, and yet he's, here's a kid that's going into welding and auto repair and stuff like that. And is that articulate. Yeah, it's measurable, though.
Yeah, well, that's great. Look, again, I say, friends, I'm just a product of academic wars. And I'm just looking at from the standpoint of a dean wanting to cut something. Okay, so, um, I, okay, make decisions in and for groups. What demonstrates self-awareness?
Okay, so, um, I can speak from the elementary level, especially around our socio-emotional curriculum. We are working at helping students, um, self-regulate and be aware of themselves in a group setting or among others. For example, um, we're teaching them how to have empathy towards others. We're teaching them to monitor their own behavior and how others perceive them, to recognize whether they're feeling frustrated or angry or upset, and, and teaching them some skills
This makes sense. Everything I say makes sense, but it adds something. It isn't just self-awareness. It's self-awareness in some activity. And so, if there was some specificity to the end
So, in social settings or something like that?
Whatever you want to put there, and that sort of satisfies my
Self-awareness when in groups?
Self-awareness.
We could work on that.
Satisfies my self-awareness as one of the vulnerabilities.
In, yeah.
Social situations or something like that?
And, yeah, that was one where the document we were looking at, the description was so long, we cut it as short as possible. So, it, we, we do need to give more details there. That makes sense.
Yeah, I, you know, that's basically it for me, and my suspicion is that self-awareness and the decision in and for groups possibly could be combined some way in one. But that's just an assumption, a suspicion. So, I, that's, I've said my piece. I appreciate your response.
We were almost to the next one. And I just, and I, I don't have a problem with this, really. But establish and maintain healthy and rewarding relationships with diverse individuals and groups. I don't, how are they going to be
Yeah.
graded on that? You know, like, because I know there's a, there's, I guess nowadays, few students that are so quiet that they don't really have a clique, you know, they really don't have a group. I was, I wasn't one that had a clique, I guess, and maybe I would be considered as somebody that was not, um, in, you know, in a diverse group, I guess, or friends with, with those people. I was friendly. But I was deathly afraid half the time in, in a lot of different settings. So, how would that be measured, I guess? And what if a child is, doesn't demonstrate the way that maybe most kids do? Then how would you find out if they really, if they have a problem? Or is it just, you know, do they have to do it in school? Or maybe they, they have a totally different lifestyle where they have a, a friend group at home or a church? They, they go have friends at church, but they don't, they're not real friendly with people at school, so.
And a part of how we might measure that is, is looking at how kid, giving kids the opportunity and, and helping them grow when they work in those groups to do, you know, whether it's cooperative learning activities or to do some group problem solving. Um, you know, some kids, in the old days, when I was growing up, tended to only want to work with these four kids all the time. And would resist the teacher putting you, saying, you know, I want you to try working with some different kids and see how you can, how as a team you can come, you can get some different ideas and that kind of thing. So, what we might do to demonstrate that, that we could then evaluate is, how adaptable are they to working with different kinds of people to do different things?
It is also true in the social science circles that kids, adults too. But when you do things with other people, that is the best way to get to people, to expand their horizons about diverse, working with diverse people and stuff like that. If you do something with somebody, you have a shared memory, even if you didn't like the person. But by doing it, whether you hate it, and I hated being in groups at school, by the way. Still, when you do it with them, and you're forced to do stuff with them, you come out of it with, well, shared memories. There can be good ones, bad ones, but by doing it, you've got something that you've, you've gained something. You've expanded some horizon. At that point, the more you do that, the better it is, the more broad the kids get. And so, we still have to figure out how to measure that, but, um, still, just, I know from, well, boy, my job, but also just in, in social science circles, when people do things with others, that's where the, that's where the rubber meets the rubber.
I think that's very good, and I also want to commend yourself and anybody else on this, their understanding of citizenship. That was probably strategically put in to buy off Campbell, and I want to tell you
Well, I'll tell you, it is a major focus of ours. And, um, we're already, uh, the elementary level, our report card has, you know, we're giving grades or standards-based, standards-based grades, um, a one, two, three, or four, whether students are meeting the standard in math, science, English Language Arts, and those major disciplines. But we're giving a different kind of grade, if you will, or mark on the report card for more of these lifelong learning skills, which include cooperativeness and things like that. So, we're already doing that, but we're marking satisfactory needs improvement or exemplary. Um, so, we're already doing that. So, 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 in that sense, the student is kind of getting a grade. But, but maybe not all of these is that we're giving the student a grade on. It's just that we are gauging and measuring and collecting data on this, for example, using our Sabers tool to kind of evaluate how, um, are the social emotional wellness of our students. So, that's not a grade we're giving students, but it is data we're collecting so that we can see if our programs are working.
Well, I just want to commend Art for, uh, teaching me something this evening, not that this is the first time, or I'm all that surprised. But I like his way of describing common memory. Actually, the whole thing on citizenship with me is instilling the right memories, so that you're, you're an American whether you know it or not. You know, you, you feel something of the star sang, and by using things, by going in different, uh, tasks, Robert's Rules of Order, doing things in an ordered way, that tells you most of the story right there. I would rather they knew something about the specific benchmarks of the history. Just pe- teaching patriotic myths well would be something I would satisfy for. But the substantive aspect of that is common memories. That's exactly the point. To build common memories is how we become one people. And of course, then sharing the memories of other people that come into that, you know, the, the e pluribus unum, you know, there's the one and the many, and I think they both play together, and they play together substantively, substantively, as Art mentioned.
The very last sentence in the opening is crossed out. Do we mean to leave that in? As the board establishes the following standards by which students accept? Is this to be measured? Yeah, we can, we can, no doubt. Thank you.
Spencer, do you have anything to add?
Not particularly. I just think it was a good point, whoever made it. I, I think it's interest, I think it'll be interesting to see how we can administer some of these, because I think it'd be hard to do, especially at the high school level where you're not in a class with a teacher all day. And you're, you only got sixty minutes to teach so many things. So, I think it's, it'll be interesting to see how we can do that.
And that's, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I would not have thought of that on my own. When we, we just talked about the, um, I know the, the grade school level, you know, their citizenship, or how they, their you know, ex- meets expectations, needs improvement, and stuff like that. And that's where I go back to the problem of, well, my second period teacher thinks I'm doing fantastic, my, loves my personality. Fourth period, we don't see eye to eye. So, now I have a exceeds versus a needs improvement. And so, now we just blew the top on our subjectivity. And any, any area of evaluation, when you're overly subjective, it makes the evaluation meaningless, in my opinion. I would challenge you guys, I mean, I, two A, I like. Two B, I could probably live with. Two C, I can't. Um, I, I really would challenge you guys to go back, maybe tear it apart and build it back up, because it's just, to me, I think any, any way you say, well, we can demonstrate this way, I could show you a way that, well, that's, you're saying it, and somebody else is saying it completely wrong. And I look at it as well as being, what's the next board going to measure that? You know, and so, that, that's my, my tough part with two C, and I, I love the work that's gone in, and I love the feeling of it. I really do. But at the end of the day, when you're giving your report, I say, yeah, oh, man, she hit the nail on the head. And Art's over here hitting me in the, over the back of the head going, are you crazy? And so, I, I mean, I don't
That's the essence of subjective assessment. And I think these are all good. I like the social skills that you have listed here. But again, if there isn't a common way to measure them through a common filter, which is what you just talked about. Um, that's going to make it difficult for the student. At the elementary level, not so much, because that kid is with the same teacher all day long. Um, and social skills, to me, are basic civility. And if, if it can be boiled down to that, do they treat one another in a civil manner? Can they discuss and debate and converse in a
Respectfully, yeah.
civil manner? Um, all of these things create that civility. Um, I don't personally agree that you should throw the whole thing out, but I, I do think
I didn't say the whole thing. I just said I don't want two C.
Well, that's, that's the whole, the whole thing of two C.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to see remarks?
Yeah, but I, I think if you find a way, um, a common filter, a common measurement for this, I think they're good. And, and I like, I like every bullet under two C. And again, I, I say that it speaks to being a civil
And the other challenge on that, too, is I think we've worked really hard to give you a very broad box to work out of.
Yes.
And this really closes the box, in my opinion.
Okay.
I, I really think, because it, it can get so easy, once again, I don't know what the next board looks like. It can get really easy to start nitpicking on these sort of things. And then all of a sudden, that, our parameters of which you operate get narrow and narrower and narrower, narrower, narrower. Can't say that word. To the point of, man, the, the board's making a lot of
Yeah, I'm sorry to get fruit flies in the building this week.
Until the board is, is having more, more operational input than I think it is. And that's slippery slope, you know, and that's
Those are really, all of those are really good comments, and we can take those back and, and work with those and
Yeah, I would, I would say that this is the most vulnerable and the most, um, it is most inviting for pulling things together. For example, the second one, constructive choices, et cetera, et cetera. Establish and maintain healthy, rewarding relationships with very diverse individuals and groups. Seem to be those two are related, and so is the self, the self-awareness one. Of course, you guys gave a defense. To the extent that these things relate to some way of talking that relates to some audience that you've got to satisfy, then I'll pull back. But I'm just talking about, A, a general reader with a specific background.
Okay. Well, and I, still, I believe that it's important for families, parents, or guardians to understand that these social skills that you've just described here, well, the expectation is that the, our students will have these social skills, and maybe they're more directed at a secondary student than an elementary, and the personal skills development builds to the social skills. I don't know. But, um, I, I don't think that we should take them out altogether. I, I'd like to see them in there. I don't want to put you in a box, however. He did have a really good point there, um, because I'm thinking about now a monitoring report and what that would look like, and how extremely difficult it would be to gather this data and Yeah, I will take a list, uh, look and, and bring you back another draft. It might be that we condense that list and, and look at some things that are more measurable and, and more simple. For example, I think, um, the first bullet is one that's very easy to measure. And although that is, can be social skills, that can also be academic skills. That language did come from the, the state standards document, so it is
But those are, I think, fairly, any reasonable person could say, that's an objective standard. That's an objective measurable outcome. You know, and I had made a little note here to myself. One thing that I don't see in any of this is an ability, you know, critical thinking, demonstrate, you know, I think it goes right in there with independence, critical thinking, something our society seems to be lacking anymore. But, um, and I would caution on, you know, and I know we talk a lot about it, and I love data as much as the next person, but we can't get lost in it, because at the end, that, that bullet point represents a person. You know, and at the end of the day
So, I'm inclined to agree a whole lot with what Craig says, except for when I have to beat him on back of that. But anyway.
So, you sit there?
Something that, there's, um, whatever these things turn out to be, and whatever we wind up approving down the road and stuff, I'm, I can see particularly for those social skills developments, types of things, there's a lot of work that you would have to do, you and the teachers have to do to help this happen. And that, I can see, means some big changes and some real collaborations.
I think they're doing it.
Particularly on the high school level, for making these things happen, such as what we saw happening at Manson.
Right. Well, and I do think that they're doing that, they're just not following the list. I think they are consciously, um, developing these skills in their students. They're not documenting it, reporting it. In, in developing this initial scab at this, what we're looking at doing is, how do we define the changes we're actually trying to make and what we're actually trying to do in addressing the needs of the whole child? And, and if we implement a program like we saw at Manson, it would fit into many of these things as, and as a way to measure, are we doing some of this? And as a way to give our kids some independence and the ability to demonstrate that they're ready for the real world. And it also ties in with, you have the document that, um, I think I shared with you briefly that the district MTSS team created a draft last week, that we hope that these things reflect each other or reflective of each other. And this, this is the work that that team is doing around, if we can, need to describe to people what we're doing in our multi-tiered systems of support, we're doing them because as a district, we believe these statements, and we promise to deliver on these statements for our kids. Um, and that's hopefully connected to whatever we end up with. And that's hopefully connected to whatever we end up with in these ends results, changes that we might look at.
Do you have a hundred percent buy-in on these core beliefs?
This is from the, this is a draft from the MTSS team to begin with. You know, as we talk about this, and we talked about this in our leadership team today, and this is the first time that we really got a chance outside of the MTSS core team to discuss it. You know, if we end up agreeing as, as the leadership team, which includes teacher leaders, that these are what we believe in in the district, then these statements become how we select our new employees. That if, if we don't believe these things, then maybe this isn't the best place to be once we have, you know, agreed that whatever list, if this one changes, is our true belief system as what education means in North Mason, then this becomes the definition of what we, what our buildings should provide to our kids and our families.
I would, I'd go even further, Laura, if there's a hundred percent buy-in, do we a hundred percent buy-in as a board?
Well, that's kind of why I'm bringing it to you, because if you don't like some things on here, I want to bring this back to the team.
'Cause this, I mean, and just, and I was gonna make a comment from in the normal meet, regular meeting with regards to the conferences. You know, I had that, that one breakout session I went to with regards to trauma-sensitive schools and the ACES and all that stuff, and MTSS was a big part of that. And that was one of the things, is, you know, they have, are your custodians taking part in this, are your bus drivers taking? And I was thinking, why are we not taking part in these things? I mean, the, if I'm, if I'm a random employee of the school district and I'm taking these, but I see my, you know, I don't see the top people doing it, well, don't come down on me for not having buy-in, where are you guys at? And that's, so that's another thing, I would, I would challenge us as a group to make sure that we have a hundred percent buy-in on this as well. Because nothing says, you know, the one thing we do control, I think, very, very much so, is the budget. And you, you show me someone's budget and I'll show you their values.
And so, part of the reason for bringing you the, the draft core belief assist document today is, what does the board think about this document?
Oh, you have a hundred percent of my buy-in on this document. I'm not gonna wordsmith it, I think it's great. And I do believe this, I think that these are the commitments and beliefs that we should have in this school district. Particularly the, the one where we promise every student will be provided effective, explicit, systematic, and relentless, I love that word, instruction with a research-based core curriculum.
Well, it seems all those bullet points under the commitments for implementation, those can be measured. It doesn't leave a whole lot of fluff in there that can be debated. The, one question I had, this was a merging of E3 into E2, right? Correction, so we were, one thing though, that I think me personally would have a tough time with, of eliminating, is the, I never liked the graduate career in college ready, because, once again, what does that mean? But students will have the opportunity to earn college-level credits. I think having that somewhere in there is, is really good. Number four, all students will be challenged with academic, academically rigorous experiences in coursework. And I don't know if, if that goes back to a subjective term, but it's something, you know, something that's challenging. Whether, whether you're talking about the highly capable people or the folks who have an IAP, whatever, but they're being academically challenged to that level. I think that's important to, as still a value of ours.
And that would go under two A.
Yeah, I believe so. And then the other part is, the supports are available to ensure academic success for all students, and that goes back to, 'cause a lot of this is what the students are gonna, are gonna do. What's, what's this district going to do to ensure that, sort of thing? You know, so, I'm, I'm all about making things.
Don't throw the baby out with the bad luck.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, and I'm, I'm not married to all three of those, but at the very least, the, the academically rigorous experiences in coursework, I think.
Okay. I've got really neat and tidy notes about everything that you said.
It's better than, better than mine.
You can look at that.
Back to the core beliefs, Craig, do you think this is something that should be on the agenda for us to adopt?
Tonight? Or at some point?
I, I would like to take back your support to it, to the committee, and so that they know that you like it this way.
Is there anything anybody would like to change in it or doesn't like or wants to discuss?
I would just say as a block, two C is the weakest one of all.
We're talking about the core beliefs here.
We'll talk about this one.
Oh, okay.
These.
Oh, well, goodness.
Hello. So a thought that I have, which may or may not fit in here, but it may, maybe it fits in the other one, is, it's, it's really being a specific thing. I would love to see every kid to have, if it's not a mentor, but somebody, a staff person of some port who's looking out for that kid. Every kid has somebody.
That goes back to that trauma-sensitive schools, was there, there was a comment made that.
And I don't know what you call that, but Manson does that too.
Having a strong adult, you know, a, a consistent, reliable adult.
An advocate, right.
Advocate, but also, you know, some.
Someone that actually seeks them out, not to wait for them to come, but to go.
And I think a statement like that would fit really well under the promises section.
They even have that at the shipyard, when you go to the shipyard, you don't, you can opt out. But you get a mentor, and you can go through the, the mentor, I was one of the leaders in the mentor group. And it was, it was a really great program. Not everybody took advantage of it, which the people that did were very successful, and people that didn't, some were successful, but you could see the ones that fell, they were offered many times a mentor, and especially when they were falling, that that mentor was offered to them, and, and some took it and some didn't. I wanted to make a comment about two C. We talk about parents, and we talk about us, and we talk about teachers and the staff knowing, you know, where the kid, the student is, but the student knowing where they are. So, getting something at the end of school, before the end of school, really, going out there. So when I was in high school, I never got, I never got these kind of things at the end of high school. Like, I had a lot, I thought a lot about, I didn't think a lot about it myself, like I was stuck up or anything, but I had some ideas, like when I was going out there that I thought were right. But maybe if somebody would evaluated what those thoughts were in this, this exact one. And yes, some of them, even if you, instead of making them shorter, maybe making them bigger, because it explains it more. So you, when, after you explained the short ones, they were a little bit easier to swallow, they were, they were better. But I think when a student goes out, it's really important that they know how the adults and the, the leadership see them. And go, you know, yeah, go on out there, you're fine. No, well, you know, go out there and you're gonna get slapped in the face, 'cause there's a lot of crazy stuff if you're acting the way you're acting, you know, so. And I think that's really cool, that a lot of those, I, I, I get where your guys' hearts and minds were there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would commend you particularly for the point that Laura brought out, relentless. There must be something wrong with that statement, because I like it, and it's got style.
Never give up, never give up.
Exactly, yeah. So that was, that was bold of you, and I appreciate it.
I appreciate it very much that you went to the trouble to do this, I just wasn't expecting it. But this is, this raises discussion on us and stuff like that, boy, that's the healthiest thing we can do, is hash this stuff out.
As Vince Lombardi said, perfection is unattainable, but we will relentlessly strive to achieve it.
And I am really interested in the student perspective on this, because I really believe that they are the, they are our end. And so, Spencer, if you have any, if you wanna take that back and think about it and maybe even talk with Morgan about it a little bit, I, I'd just like to know what your feeling is about these things that we're expecting students to be able to achieve.
My first look at it is, I think it's pretty good. I'm definitely gonna take it back, and I think, discuss it with the leadership class. That'd be a good group to discuss it with, and definitely Morgan, get their opinion on it.
Great. And you mentioned the Saber survey, what is that?
It's an assessment tool, it's spelled S, capital S, capital A, capital E.
B R S.
Small b, small r, small s, right?
It's always a cool acronym.
It's not a, it's not a sword.
No. But it, it's a, it has two different versions, there's Sabers and there's My Sabers. So, the Sabers is a tool that an adult fills out about the students with whom they interact, the students in their classroom or at the middle school, it's the students in their pause class. At the high school, I think it's based on one period of the day, everybody did it. But then the My Sabers, the students, starting in what grade?
I, I don't know what grade, it could be, I think at least second, but I, the lowest is second, but I'm not sure.
But the students also can do a version, the My Sabers version. So, then we can look at what adults think about, you know, what, how, how emotionally, socially kids are doing. And do the kids think the same thing? And, and I think really, we don't have all the data yet in the high school, I don't wanna throw them under a bus 'cause particularly, they're not done, they've only done a small portion of the students. But of the portion of the students that they have done, those students are being a little harsher than the adults are.
On themselves, as a self-assessment?
How they feel about their social emotional and where they are right now. So that will give us some really good information about what do we need to do to help, you know, and we heard that in our last meeting with the leader, with the kids at the high school, with our, our last session that we did, that kids are worried about their social emotional and where they are. And I think we see that reflected for some of the kids in their work with this Sabers tool. So that gives another really good measure that the staff can use to say, okay, what problem solving can we do to provide some supports for kids if we're doing the things on this core belief statement? How are we supporting kids that are struggling because life is tough in two thousand and eighteen for teenage kids?
And the Sabers is, it's a, it's a quick screener. Really, the idea is it takes about three minutes per, for a teacher to fill in the, the Sabers on each student. So, if, at the elementary level, if the teacher has twenty-two students, it's, it's only gonna take about three minutes per student, so. And the idea is that we do this at multiple points in the year, two or three, so that we can evaluate and screen quickly the socio-emotional well-being of our students. So then we can provide some interventions and supports where needed, where we see kids might be at risk.
I have one more little thought that may go into two B or two C, I'm not sure. Something I didn't see there that I like is measuring whether kids follow through on things they say they're going to do. When I work with the Builders Club kids, that's always a problem. This is my best example. He frequently said he would do something, and then the next meeting or two meetings later, he had done it. Otherwise, I have to push the kids, remind them. Laura, your daughter, your granddaughter was also pretty good that way too, the one who's now in high school.
Good to hear.
In any case, that's a, that's a skill that kids need to have, need to develop too, and I just didn't see that really reflected directly in there. So I don't know if that's worth it to you guys, but I'll throw it out there.
Yeah, we'll take it back and do some work and bring it back and.
That's really valuable, of course, to employers.
Yes.
I want you guys, the committee, whoever, all, all of you who worked on this, I mean, it is good, it is good work, it really is. But if it's gonna be our policy, we can have our.
That's right, you do, that's why we're talking about it.
All right, anybody else have anything for the study session? No? All right, so we're gonna move to adjourn, and then we'll be starting our regular session at six thirty. Boom.
Thanks, guys.